Okay, I'm gonna call to order the February 12th, 2019 meeting, work session of the City Commission. Would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle-Smith?
Here.
Mayor Holliday is absent this evening. President Frank O'Donnell?
Here. First item, do we have any future agenda items that need to be introduced by anyone? Hearing none, we'll move on to the discussion items. 3A, which is PC 19-016, titled as "The Legal Land Use Training Presented by the Assistant City Attorney, Carrie Richter." Ms. Turway, would you care to make the kickoff?
Thank you very much. I'd just like to introduce you to our favorite Assistant City Attorney, Carrie Richter. She's the only one.
And the favorite.
There you go.
Thank you. My apologies for my delinquency. So I'm thinking that we are gonna spend about 45 minutes going through about 10 slides. I know that two of the three of you have reviewed quasi-judicial land use proceedings before, so I'm gonna try to move through that. And I know that Commissioner Lyle-Smith works for the agency that is charged with all the rules, so I probably don't need to tell her that there are 18 statewide planning goals. And, you know, we could just have a quiz. You could list them.
There's 19, actually.
Let's not have one of those.
So, anyway, my point is, I'm gonna try to move through this quickly, give you the high points. I urge you to interrupt me and ask questions. We don't wanna talk about any matters that are currently pending, but I can't think of any right now. So, anyway, so keep that in mind as we move through. I put these slides on, imprint out on your DIA so you can see them either, in either form. So we've got land use review categories is sort of the starting place. All local governments have their categories of types of decisions that we make in the land use realm, and they are rated based on the amount of discretion that is involved in making the decision. So Type 1 decisions are decisions where there's no discretion, decisions like building permits and there are subdivisions where we know what the setbacks are, and we know what the building heights are, and we know where the roads are gonna be. All of those things are sort of set forth in the standards, and they are what we call clear and objective. They're quantifiable standards. So in those cases, there's nothing, there's not, there's no analysis that needs to be made, so there's no notice, there's no hearing. These decisions happen over the counter, basically, for Laura and her staff. The Type 2 through Type 4 decisions are quasi-judicial decisions, and this is sort of the bread and butter of what land use review is all about. This is the conditional use permits, this is the variances, this is the master plans, this is site plan review. These are, all these types of decisions fall into these quasi-judicial decisions, and these decisions, you are sitting as a judge. And that's what distinguishes these quasi-judicial decisions from legislative decisions. You are to be reviewing the application to determine if the applicable standards are met, as opposed to making policy and deciding what the standard should be. So because you are evaluating a proposed application for compliance, there is a higher standard on the decision-maker to be unbiased, to be forthwith about what the materials are that are in the record, that are subject to the review. There are, there's just a higher threshold of ethics that come along with when you are being a judge, as opposed to being a more of a politician in the legislative decision type of review. So quasi-judicial decisions, there are three types. Type 2 is limited discretion decision-making. These are subdivisions and site plan reviews, and these will only come to you on appeal. If they aren't appealed, then the planning director makes a decision, and that's the final decision. Type 3 decisions, those are the ones that are heard by the Planning Commission and the Historic Review Board, and those, again, get appealed to you. If they don't get appealed, they, you don't see them. Type 4 decisions are plan amendments, zoning map amendments, and they do come to you because they are a Planning Commission recommendation with the final decision by the City Commission. And again, the reason why we have this more rigorous review for these Type 4 decisions is they're more akin to policy. They are, they have a bigger effect. They are, they are more discretion in terms of compatibility or compliance with the comprehensive plan, and because you are asked to interpret those bigger policy questions, that's why Type 4 reviews go to you. And then legislative decisions are sort of the other side of the sort of things you review in the land use arena, and these are long-range policymaking decisions. This is where you're writing code, adopting concept plans, those sorts of things are legislative decisions, and in those cases, you are supposed to be out in the community talking to people about what they think and what the policy ought to be. And so it's a, it's a completely different type of role that you play in those, in the legislative arena. So with that background, we're gonna talk primarily about the quasi-judicial decisions because that's where, that's where the additional, additional standards, the different procedures are set out in state law, and so we don't have any choice, and that's what our code implements. So at the beginning of every quasi-judicial hearing, I, the city attorney gets the lucky task of reading the script, and that script sets out the procedures provided in state law about how hearings have to run. And in sum, that script sets out the framework of everything that's gonna happen at the public hearing. It says that the applicable criteria have been posted in the notice so that the public's aware of what the approval standards are gonna be that the City Commission's going to be reviewing. It tells people that there's been a staff report, and again, the staff report is what evaluates, is staff's effort to evaluate the application against the criteria to give the City Commission a basis to either approve, deny, or approve with conditions, modify the decision. In the disclosures, we say that testimony is to be directed to the criteria. One of the things that's really important is that our decisions are focused on the evidence presented and the criteria that are before us. A particular applicant could be, the very best applicant, could be the nicest people, could do a whole bunch of charitable works, but if their application doesn't meet the criteria, we can't approve it. So we try to focus everyone on the criteria that are before the City Commission for review. We say that failure to raise an issue precludes raising it before the Land Use Board of Appeals. One of the things that is built into the land use system is this idea of funneling, of taking the, taking all of the issues and sort of narrowing them to identify what are the issues that are in controversy. So staff does this in the staff report, you know, they find the issues that may be in controversy, and they highlight them for the City Commission or the Planning Commission in the staff report. Planning Commission does that review too, and they sort of narrow issues further, and people come testify and raise their concerns. And so, again, we're sort of narrowing the issues, and this continues when it's reviewed before the City Commission, we identify what are the, the close calls, and then ask you to sort of weigh in on those close calls. Not that your review is limited, or that the public's participation is limited, but it's, it's a narrowing because we wanna identify all the issues. And one of the rules, in order to appeal a decision beyond the City Council Commission to the Land Use Board of Appeals, is that you have raised all issues. So the public, everyone has an obligation to vet the issues so the city has an opportunity to respond to them. So...
I have a question.
Yeah.
Do they need to raise the issue prior to coming to us at like a Planning Commission meeting, or can the issue be considered raised by the time it reaches us?
It depends on the type of review.
Okay.
Type 2 decisions, the kind that come from the planning director, go directly to you, those are what we call de novo. De novo means like new. So in those cases, all new issues can be raised.
So that's the criticality of even opening or closing the record too, is it not?
Uh huh. In Type 3 decisions, you're limited on appeal to the issues that you raised, and that's, again, that narrowing. We're trying to vet the issues and narrow the scope, you know, we don't wanna have at the 11th hour, a new issue raised that wasn't raised before the Planning Commission when the Planning Commission is charged, the experts charged with sort of having, having the most knowledge. So that's why we have it structured that way.
So when it gets to the City Commission, do not look for us to reopen the record? That should not be a practice?
There, okay, so there's two, there's a record. The record is the written materials and the new evidence that is submitted. That is to be distinguished from a public hearing. Public hearing is where we take testimony, but we limit that testimony to evidence already in the record. So we will have a public hearing. You will open the public hearing at an appealed land use proceeding, but we may or may not take evidence so people can testify. We may not take new facts as part of that testimony. Do you see the distinction?
I do. And you or one of your counterparts will be the screening mechanism to decide if that can come forward?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And we make that very clear in the notice, whether, at the very start, at the Planning Commission, whether or not this is a type of proceeding where appeals will be de novo or on the record. So folks at the outset know, and then when we do the disclosure script at the Planning Commission, we tell people. So they know they have, the Planning Commission is their only opportunity to bring new evidence. So we also say that there is an obligation to raise constitutional issues as part of a local proceeding if you fail to raise constitutional issues, and that is particularly relevant to takings issues when a local government exacts too much, requires too much in its conditions. If, if a applicant is not happy with the scope of the conditions, they have an obligation to challenge, to raise their concerns as part of a local proceeding before they can take us to a certain court for a constitutional challenge under the takings clause. And then last but not least, and probably most importantly for your purposes, is this right to an impartial tribunal. So decisions have to be based on testimony and evidence that is part of the record. That means everybody has an opportunity to come in to Katie, to Katie's, to the, you know, City Recorder or to the Planning Office and review the materials that you are going to base your decision on. So if you read a newspaper article or a blog post that, about an appeal that is pending before you, and it doesn't make it into the record, and it influences your decision, that undermines the propriety of the decision. So it's really important that, it is not, that it's really important that whatever you read outside the hearing room, or whatever information you glean about a matter pending before the city outside of the public proceedings, that you share it. And so we have a portion of the, at the beginning of every quasi-judicial hearing where I will ask the commissioners if they've had any ex parte contacts. An ex parte context means contacts, information gleaned outside of the hearing, and that can come from somebody running into the grocery store and telling you that they love this project or hate this project, or it can come from the internet, it can come from the newspaper, it can come from anywhere, but if it's outside the hearing, we need to disclose it at the hearing and give folks an opportunity to question you about that information. So that is really critical, and one of the things I've seen happen is that we disclose, people running into the grocery store and telling you they're, they love or hate this project is a really obvious one, but I think what happens is we think through these things, and oftentimes it's a policy call, right? It's, it's, could go either way. And people say, "Well, I used to be this," or "I have walked this river and I think this," or "I have particular experience with the traffic because I drive that intersection all the time," or "I, I know from my experience doing business that, that, that this particular use is gonna generate more traffic than the applicant thinks it will." All of those things are, are part of something that are not part of the record. And so you can't divorce yourself from your own experience. You all live in this community, you drive the streets, you use the water, you know what the water pressure is like, you know, all those sorts of things. But that kinda stuff needs to come out before the record closes, before, before the testimony portion closes. So the way we run the hearings is, the applicant usually speaks, and then the public gets to speak, and then after the public speaks, if you're thinking, you know, "I have driven Warner Milne, and the traffic is so much more horrible than, than anybody's talking about," or "I know, you know, what the water, what the water situation is," or "I know, I know how this circulation isn't gonna work, I know this road is too narrow." I think, I urge you to make those comments before the rebuttal starts. Not "I am in favor of this, I think the criteria are satisfied," not evaluating the standards, but the facts. These are facts. If you have some experience that makes you qualify to, about a circumstance with regard to the application, say it before the record closes. Because if during the deliberation, which is after the record closes, and you all are talking amongst yourselves, and you're evaluating the criteria and the facts that are presented, if you present a new fact, the public hasn't had an opportunity to respond, and that's what we're trying to avoid with ex parte disclosures.
So my question is on social media. If you were to read or have read to you a commentary about a specific issue on social media, would that be something you should disclose?
Yes.
And you have to be specific as to, you know, this is, there's an article by John Doe, and it says this?
Um, yes. Better yet would be to print it?
And bring it in.
And bring it in.
Okay.
Or send it to planning staff, and they will print it and bring it in.
Okay.
Newspaper articles, bring them in, because if we can just put them in the record, then everybody knows what the, what, what people are saying, and everyone has an opportunity to respond.
Understood.
Um, the, the other thing you need to know about ex parte context, though, is that a, a challenge, someone has to bring a challenge in order for this to be an issue. And so I don't want you to be unpinning the needles about this, you know? If someone brings a challenge, then we will deal with it by responding to the questions and the concerns raised. This is not a, you know, life or death situation. This is just something we want to maintain the propriety of, of the process, and so the most we can do that, the better. Decisions also have to be free of actual bias. Actual bias means that a person has a predisposition to make it impossible to render an unbiased decision. And the sort of seminal case on this is Walmart, cases where people, you know, are usually not on the fence about Walmart, you know? And certainly 10 years ago, people were not on the fence about Walmart, and people ran whole council races on their position about Walmart. And so these, or, or Liquid Natural Gas is another example of these kind of biased cases where councillors run on a platform of stopping these uses, and then they get on the City Council and they vote on those proposals. And so the question comes up whether they are predisposed to, to, to such a degree that they prejudice the program, prejudice the review. And just so you know, the, the bar Luba has set, the Court of Appeals has set for that is extraordinarily high. So it is not as though if you ran on an, on a, on a anti-Walmart or pro-Walmart campaign, you could not review that decision if you felt like you could review the application and make a decision based on the criteria. Because, again, courts understand that city councillors are citizens, and of course, they're gonna have opinions, and of course, they're going to be passionate, because that's why they came on the City Council, City Commission in the first place. So, um, so if, so that's something that if an application comes up and you feel like, you know, you are close to this, your spouse wants to testify, your child wants to testify, it's important to you, let's have a conversation, you know, let's, you and Tony and I have a conversation about it so we can talk it through. And this is why we have, you know, five commissioners so that there are people who can sit out, and, and things will go on. You also can't have any actual conference, conflict of interest, which is a pecuniary benefit, that, that the application is likely to have a direct pecuniary benefit or detriment to a decision-maker or a family member of a decision-maker. Again, if this comes up, I think we had, on the Oregon City Golf Course, I can't remember, one of the planning commissioners had a son who mowed the lawn at the golf course, and that, and so he sat out because his son had a pecuniary interest in the, the golf course. So, anyway, so we can talk about that when applications come up, but those are the sort of impartial tribunal factors that sort of you just need to keep in mind. Public meetings and records requirements. Here we've got, public meetings, you all are familiar with, majority or quorum delivering to a decision may is what constitutes a public meeting, and we've talked, I've talked to some of you before about how meeting substitutes by like a serial meeting, emails with a quorum to talk about city business can be a public meeting, so you wanna be careful with that. I know that Laura sometimes distributes materials electronically, and I urge you to ask Laura questions, but don't hit "reply all" with your questions. Hit "reply one," so we don't have a serial meeting situation. Public meetings are open to the public, and we've got notice of these meetings in minutes. Public records. Almost any writing, including electronic records, made, received, filed, or recorded in connection with city business can be a public record. And this includes work done on private email accounts, if it's city business, on personally purchased computers and handheld devices, if it's city business, could be a public record. And because of that, and because instant messaging and chat rooms that are separate from the city may not be retained, subject to the public records rules, we urge you to use your city-designated account for city business. If you get an email on your personal account for city, related to city business, I urge you to forward it to your city account and then respond to it, because, again, we're just trying to collect everything on the city's, on the city's designated account.
Does the mere presence of what would constitute a quorum of this group at an event where we're not gonna discuss business, that's just a social event, we don't have any issues with that. If I wanted to have a dinner party and invite people, that would be fine.
As long as you don't discuss city business.
Which is really difficult to do.
Come on, you have so many interesting things to talk about.
I would make sure, I would make sure to invite those people who usually represent a counterpoint as hall monitors.
Oh, I thought you were gonna say you were gonna invite really interesting people who would come up with topics that would keep you off the city business topic?
Well, we put shock collars on everybody. If it went the wrong way, press the button.
When is this party?
I haven't checked the guest list yet, so we'll just stand down. Please proceed.
So, um, one of the questions that Commissioner O'Donnell raised had to do with attorney-client privilege. Attorney-client privilege is an exception to the public records doctrine, and so I wanna just sort of hit some highlights. This is sort of a, off the, off the land use path, but it's relevant because I, I think we oughta cover it, and it's one of the issues that we've been meaning to cover anyway. So attorney-client privilege exists as an exception to the public records law when the legal advice given is specific to the client, which in this case is Oregon City. So Oregon City's the client, and it is the client, and we, we represent it through its representatives. Oregon City is a commissioner, commission manager system, which means the commission sets the direction and policy for the city, but the city manager makes the day-to-day decisions directing the city attorney to take actions and further into that policy. So the way I understand the system to go is that Tony gives us the sort of day-to-day direction pursuant to your sort of policy instruction. So in order to determine if, if a, some materials are subject to privilege, we look at whether or not the, the material is a confidential communication, and so it has to be confidential. So that means that if I provide some legal advice to the city, to Tony, and Tony sends it to you, and you accidentally send it to someone else, the privilege is lost, even if it was unintentional. And so that's why we have to be very careful with privileged materials in, you know, providing privileged handouts and then collecting them afterwards because we can't let them get, if they get in the recycling bin and somebody picks them up, the privilege is lost. I can't call it back for accident. So we have to keep confidential communications confidential. The privilege exception only applies to legal advice and not to facts. So if I tell you whether Oregon City won or lost a Luba case, that is a fact, and that is not privileged. If I tell you how much our office billed in a month on a particular case, that is a fact, that is not privileged. But if I were to share with you our billing sheets that describe the work we would do, that is privileged because that is legal advice. So there's a difference between fact and advice. And I, I get, Bill and I've had lots of discussions about the gray area there, but that's what the rule says.
If an individual commissioner were to ask legal advice from you, is that protected under attorney-client privilege?
It would depend on the request. If the request was for city business, it would, it, it would probably be subject to privilege. The only issue with that is that under the manager-commission system, the commissioner is to go to the city manager, and then the city manager is to come to the city attorney. But, but if, so if, if, if the question is, you know, what is, what is yours, you know, how does a recent decision affect the city, right? If that question is asked to me from Tony, it's privileged. If it's asked to me by the commission as a whole, it's privileged. If it's asked to me by one of you, it's privileged. If one of you comes up to me and asks me what to do about your traffic ticket, not privileged. It's city business.
It's an interesting conversation because, once again, it surfaced in today's social media. The gentleman, the community queried, you know, the hiring of the attorney by the city manager versus the commission itself, and what the impact of that is on a position taken by the attorneys. And I think it's a subject worth addressing. It's, it's kind of a fine line, you know? We, we direct Tony, and Tony communicates to you, the communication comes back to us. I'm, I'm not overly troubled by it, but it's a good read if you wanna take a moment and read it, and I don't know if you've seen it, Tony, or not. And I don't know if you've seen it, Tony, or not, as of today.
I know that that's a long conversation that we had, what, 2008, 2009? And we ended up, you know, keeping it the way it was.
So everybody's comfortable with it?
Yeah, but I mean, that conversation has been an ongoing conversation over the years that people have asked, why are we doing, you know, why isn't it structured a different way? Um, and at the time, we felt comfortable, you know, where it was after what that process was, was, um, after we had that discussion. But, um, I know it's been a question that we've asked back and forth on different, different occasions or different years, but.
Sounds like it's been asked and answered in the past, so.
Yeah, although, well, yeah, I think so, but.
I mean, I, I would suppose that if someone is questioning our city attorney's advice to us or their ability to give us non-bias or legal facts or, you know, uh, non-bias opinion where, where maybe, maybe hypothetically, Carrie knows that what she's going to tell us, Tony's not happy with, you know, you know, like, like how, how.
Exactly.
You know, do we have faith in it or in, in the integrity of our city attorneys to give us, um, information that maybe Tony wouldn't be happy with? So I mean, that, that scenario is the one, but I, I was, I assume if someone, if we suspect or someone suspects that's happening, I don't know how you, it's hard for me to imagine that situation, but, I mean, there's other avenues. They would have to take that to probably the bar, uh, the, the state.
Well, I think that, again, I, the city attorney represents the city through its representatives. So if there was a dispute between the city attorney and the city manager about the type of legal analysis, I think it would take, the resolution would be a discussion between the city attorney, the city manager, and the city commission. I mean, that, that is how that would play out. Uh, because I haven't, I, I don't represent the city manager. I represent the city. And I think that, uh, my, and my, my ethical obligation is to the city through its representatives. And our, you know, the city attorney view is that that is both city commission and city manager. But again, the day-to-day policy, the, the day-to-day actions come directly, directions come from the city manager.
So to be absolutely clear, who makes the decision which law firm to hire? Is that by the commission or by, by you?
By me. It's the city manager.
Okay. And I think that, I think you described the issue exactly, and it gets the same issue about, uh, reports from staff. Do they take a position? Do they make a recommendation or are they purely objective? And that's, that's always a challenge. I mean, we rely on staff because of expertise. We may or may not agree with the recommended course of action. Okay, thanks.
All right, back to land use. Um, oh, I'm going ba, I'm going backwards. No, okay, so public hearing procedures, we talked about this a little bit. We have the staff report, they go first, then the applicant's presentation, then the testimony of the public. We hear from both proponents and opponents. The applicant rebuttal and then the deliberation. Um, city commission usually imposes time limits. Um, they're set forth in the procedures, um, but nobody has to fuck. The deal with time limits is that we need to be uniform. So if we're going to institute timeless, we need to do it across the board. Um, if we're not going to do it, we don't have to do it. And we don't have to do it uniformly for every proceeding. If we have a, a heavy agenda and we've got a full room, time limits, you know, and they can be less than three minutes if that's what the commission decides. It's important to keep in mind that in addition to public testimony given orally at a city commission meeting, people have an opportunity to submit things in writing too. And all that stuff gets reviewed by you. So, um, it is true that we sometimes impose short time limits, but folks do have opportu, another forum in which to present their, their case. So, um, just something to keep in mind is that when you, when we think about this and what the time limits ought to be. Um, and then, and then after we've heard all the testimony, we close the public record, right? And whether that public record included new evidence or it didn't, we close the public record, which means that's the end of the opportunity for folks to submit anything, anything in writing. And we deliberate and we make a decision. And the elements of a sound decision, um, the things that are challenged when we end up, um, defending decisions at Luba are sort of threefold. One, interpreting the applicable criteria. Your job is to interpret the standards and tell and determine what they mean. Um, and ambiguous standards are to be interpreted consistent with the purpose and policy of the provision. So we're looking at the context of whatever the policy, whatever the, the ambiguous provision is around, it contains. Um, we focus on the plain meaning of the terms, um, and try to give them their dictionary definition. Um, and this is sort of like one of those things, I always find that when we go to Luba, there's always sort of one of these interpreting the applicable standards, you know, um, challenges. And it's one of those things that it's not until you get to Luba that you really are honed in enough that you really get it, right? And you think, where was I when we were drafting this code? You know, where was I? Because you just don't think of all of the scenarios that can come up. And so that's why this falls to you and that's why we try to do our very best to provide you the information you need to interpret the code, um, properly. Uh, the second, um, sort of, uh, component of a sound legally defensible decision is adequate findings. And that's an explanation of how the facts satisfy the criteria. Um, and the important part is that those, those, those findings are not just conclusions. And the standard is that the traffic will be adequate, the finding can't be, the traffic will be adequate. The finding has to be, here is what the traffic will be. The standard is that the traffic is X. The traffic will be adequate because it will be X. Um, and so, um, my hope is that you'll lean on staff to assist you in drafting defensible findings. Um, but sometimes when we've had a hearing and we've taken new testimony, that's why we have to continue the matter to come back with findings because we haven't written them yet, because issues come up during the hearing.
I have always struggled with that very example you gave. And it has to do with the, the traffic findings. And, you know, I've been in court many years as a, as a testimony and firsthand observations
How frustrated you are when you're sitting at that intersection waiting for 15 light cycles to get through. Um, so the standards are set capacity congestion, those kinds of words are terms of art that have meaning in traffic engineering analysis. And that is different than what your personal perspective is. That's sort of the first thing I think about. And when you think about, um, experts, experts are qualified people who are educated and trained in that thing. Does that mean that their opinion is worth more than your opinion as somebody who, your experiential opinion? I think the answer is it, it's up to you to decide. You all are the decision makers about which evidence is more believable. But it has to be compliant with the applicable standard. And so, um, the, the sort of seminal case is you've got two experts, two qualified transportation experts, you get to decide who to believe. You've got the applicant's qualified expert and you've got a room of 20 people who testify about what the traffic is like based on their experience. But maybe some of them have actually counted some cars. I mean, there's an element of this that goes beyond sort of your frustration level sitting in traffic. Um, and so you have to weigh how much credence to give those sort of lay analysis. And the applicant ought to take the opportunity to respond to that lay analysis and explain why it's not correct or way, explain why it's not reliable. Because this person didn't count cars at the peak time and we count during peak time. Um, they didn't, you know, they ought to be able to explain why so that this is, becomes a dialogue narrowing issues and focusing in so that you feel like you have the information you need to evaluate which, whether the criteria is satisfied. So that's substantial evidence. We also, um, are authorized to impose conditions of approval to ensure that the applicable approval standards are or can be met and we use those, um, again, to help applicants get to yes because they are our customers and we want to get them through this process. So, um, we use conditions of approval to, uh, make sure that compliance is assured. There are constitutional limitations on conditions. I mentioned that the takings clause of, um, the U.S. Constitution and the Oregon Constitution, um, limit the extent to which local governments can demand, um, financial or property improvements as conditions, uh, for an approval. And we work with applicants to, um, make the required findings to show that the, um, obligation imposed by a condition of approval is roughly proportional to the expected impact from the development. And so, you know, the, the sort of most common example of that is if a subdivision comes in, we make them put in sidewalks and we make them improve the roadway to whatever planned improvement. And, um, sometimes that, um, planned improvement is more capacity than this developer meant demands. And so as a result, we figure out how to scale that back or limit that in ways to make it what we call roughly proportional. Um, so, questions, comments, criticisms, jokes?
I've always found it interesting that we consider each project in and of itself and I'd like to be, hopefully we're allowed to consider the cumulative effect of multiple projects in the same area. And I don't know how one does that.
With regard to utility, um, capacity, when they study, when experts study it, they study all of the projects that have been approved as part of the baseline for facility and service capacity. So they, they know not only, so they can, they can include in there, they can forecast what the additional capacity is based on all the things that have been approved, even if they haven't yet been built.
So if the numerical value of failed intersection is 1.0 something and the previous development took it to 0.99, we should, the next one should say, the, the addition of this will take it to a 1.03, which is now a failed intersection. We would have that conversation.
That's how, that's how it.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
That's how it works. But it is, it, it shouldn't be on the city commission to add additional congestion from neighboring developments that you know have happened because those ought to be already baked into the engineering analysis as the baseline, the starting point. And then, so that's the baseline, then this project adds that many more trips and that puts it over one point, whatever, or it doesn't.
Does anyone else have any additional questions or comments?
Yeah, I do. I want to follow up on that. And maybe this is more towards Laura, I'm not sure which one, but, so say we have a concept plan area, um, takes out then, for example, and we're doing annexations a piece at a time. Are you saying that the traffic analysis that is performed includes all of the potential build-out for the concept plan? Or, or is it's done piece by piece? And so if hypothetically a developer or property owner gets in on the action earlier than a later one, maybe they won't trigger that threshold that requires them to build the sidewalks or build the extra infrastructure, like, can you explain?
So with a concept plan, we have already figured out how mu, how big the roads need to be to facilitate a full build-out. We've already figured out what those roads are going to be. And then in order to annex and zone change, we have the transportation planning rule, which says that we can't approve a zone change unless that additional develop, density, additional congestion can be handled as part of that, right? So at every step of the way, we are ensuring that the capacity will be there before the houses come. And let's say that in order for a development to occur, it has to go through a space that's not being developed, like we have an annexation area that's down here and this area is not annexed. What we've done is ask them to analyze the capacity of this area right here that's not annexed, assuming that it won't be developed before this area is. Um, because, and as part of that, that, that's also why we've required master plans in order to ensure that we have concurrence with our transportation infrastructure or any service infrastructure as we go along. Sorry, Laura.
No, that's right. We analyze transportation over and over and then we do it again on every proposal. So we do the city as a whole and our transportation system plan, but it's not just the city as a whole, it's the city plugged into the metro region so we can capture drive-by. And then, so that's the big picture. And then, as Carrie was saying, we'll do it with concept plan, then we'll do it with annexation, then with zone change. And then with each application where we're getting more specificity, we can, um, do it again with more, um, clear results because we know exact, we're narrowing down the scope of what is actually being proposed. Um, but we do take into account other transporta, other projects as they occur as well. So, um, you asked a question about if one could go and take the capacity of another one, that's absolutely true. It's just don't break it. So you can get in, you just can't go over, our criteria has specific standard, a specific V over C or it depends on the intersection. But if it gets past this one point, it's a problem. And so, um, that is what you, we cannot approve anything that does that. Um, there, we analyze every intersection if they meet certain requirements anyway, even if we think that it will be fine. And from that, we can, you know, start to get exactions and things like that for people to mitigate their impacts. Like at Beaver Creek in 213, when we did the alternate mobility targets, now we have this calculation of everyone who puts, um, one trip in the intersection owes so much money to go towards fixing that intersection, so.
So like, you do a concept plan for the area, let's say it's going to generate 5,000 trips during the AM peak hour when it's fully built out. And so then we put in our transportation system plan, so it's focused on traffic. You're going to need, you know, a four-lane section of this old two-lane road, you're going to need four stoplights. And the stoplights aren't going to get triggered until the V over C, until the criteria is not met. So let's just say the trigger is 1,000 trips. So let's just say the trigger is 1,000 trips, 1,000 new trips trigger a stoplight. So when someone comes in for an annexation, let's say they're, you know, a little two acre annexation, you know, they're going to generate 10 trips during the AM peak hour. They're not going to make, you know, they're not going to require that improvement to come in. You bring in a larger development, you bring in 150 acres and maybe all of a sudden it trips one. So the concept plan looks at the total trips, improvements necessary to the system that then get into the master, into the transportation system plan for added capacity, which then we collect system development charges on. But then there's usually going to be something that triggers it. So you'll see these annexations that come in early, don't trigger the improvements, the off-site improvements.
Right.
You know, you'll get your onsite ones along your frontage. So, I mean, that's-
And I think that's what we hear, or that's what we've seen, right? I mean, we've seen, you know, smaller, you know, annexations, but they don't quite trigger something where the folks are saying, wait, this is going to really affect a particular road and, yeah.
It's one of the things we've talked about, especially where they've put in the master planning requirement, is so that you can look at larger areas of development, which then you start to set. When you hit your first 100 homes, alls you have is frontage improvements. Your second 100 homes, you're going to trigger whatever, a light here, right? Your third 100 homes might be this, or whatever that ends up being. But yeah, I think it's been, the hard thing in Oregon City is we do a lot of small annexations and it's actually easier to get exactions and improvements with those larger annexations because you actually have impacts that are significant and measurable, which start to cause failure.
But this, people should feel comfort knowing that we do this citywide and regionwide analysis to, to look at those death by 1,000 cuts, to assume that all properties are being developed and seeing what those total impact is on intersections as well.
Including remote intersections that are not proximate to the development?
Mm-hmm, so in the TSP, we assume full build out of the city.
Okay. I have one final question to help me with something that's been on my, when architectural standards are stated in either master or concept plan, which of these venues is the correct way to address a requested change in those?
I'm not sure what you mean. You want to change, you want to change one of the regulations?
You know what I'm talking about.
You want to change one of the code?
I want to ask the question properly without being too specific, so.
So if you, if there is a standard in our code that you would like to change, you need to change our code, generally that is through a legislative process. If that standard is linked to some requirement in a concept plan, then when we do the analysis for the code amendment, we'll have to make sure that that also complies with the concept plan.
Okay.
So it's legislative, meaning it affects everyone, it affects a big group, it is making policy. If you're going to make policy about what the standards ought to be, that's a legislative decision.
Versus focusing on one property?
One property with a request to do something, to build something.
Yeah. We can have that discussion continue offline. I just wanted some general guidance on it. Thanks. Very good. Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right. All right, we'll bring that aspect of the meeting to a conclusion. Thank you for a job well done and thanks for tolerating my many questions. And we can move on to the next item on the agenda, which is 19-116, the Kenema Neighborhood 20 Mile per Hour Pilot Project. That would be Mr. John Lewis.
That's right, that's right. Thank you very much. Dana Webb's going to be doing most of the presentation, but I just wanted to say, this isn't a project that's going to add to any congestion in Oregon City. So the good news is, is we finally bring something to you that doesn't create a problem. This is a solution-based proposal here. And we brought it to you before, Commissioner O'Donnell, you will remember the topic, I'm sure.
I do.
But Commissioner Smith and Lyle Smith, you probably won't. It was back in June, so maybe you were watching then, but, so it's this 20 mile per hour speed limit conversation. It's a, actually a fix that the legislature has provided now for local agencies to implement. The problem is getting kind of local authority to, to do that, right? And so when we brought it to you in the summer, there were some questions and we heard some of that. We just want, Dana's going to go through all that. But just, I wanted you also to recognize, because I wasn't sure what kind of reception we would necessarily get on this, that we had some apprehension about it. We sat on it and really it's, it's mostly because of a workload issue and just not really being able to deal with some of the questions that came up. But we also wanted to wait until we had new commissioners in place so that we weren't kind of forming some policy that then they got stuck with. So we're bringing this forward and Dana's, Dana will go through it much more succinctly than, than I can. Thanks.
Thank you. Tonight we'll talk about a 20 mile per hour speed limit pilot project. So as John mentioned, back in the summer, we brought a full policy that would implement an opportunity to provide a 20 mile per hour speed limit in certain areas of the city. What we heard of that work session presentation was questions about the increase in the safety from lowering the speed limit, so I've got a little bit of information about that. We were encouraged to look at the program being based on a request from a neighborhood, not a staff deciding where to implement this. And so we've, this pilot program addresses that, community outreach before the implementation, which I'll talk through a little bit. And then how do we evaluate the program? So I've got a little bit of information to follow up on those items. For those of you who weren't here for the original, I did attach a copy of the draft policy and I'll just quickly walk through it. The legislature allows the implementation of the 20 mile per hour speed limit. If it meets a few criteria, it needs to be located in a residential district, it needs to have fewer than 2,000 vehicles per day on the roadway, and the speeds need to be 85th percentile, less than 30 miles per hour. And then you have to place traffic control devices that indicate the presence of pedestrians and bicycles. And so the, the draft policy provided an option of a family-friendly plaque underneath a speed limit sign and then some pavement markings based on the, if there are sidewalks or not. So there were two different types of markings. So a little bit on the safety, these are not documents that I created, these are some items that I've borrowed from City of Portland with their speed reduction program. So this is kind of just a visual of, in the event you were hit by a vehicle moving at the, at the speed noted, the likelihood of a fatality or severe injury. So their visuals didn't have a 25, so you can kind of make an assumption there in the middle and see, you know, somewhere probably 25% likelihood, which drops it down to 10%. And so, you know, the idea of placing these in residential areas, the city also has proposed that we would only implement them on family-friendly routes, which are routes that we've identified that would be used to get from points of interest, parks, schools, those kind of things. So, you know, kind of looking at it from that perspective, the next slide is kind of the, a similar idea and it also shows the stopping site distance. So in the event a vehicle is traveling 30 miles an hour, it's going to take them 200 feet to stop. If they're only traveling 20 miles per hour, that stopping distance decreases to 110 feet. So that's a little bit of safety information for that. The pilot project that we are proposing would be to implement the 20 mile per hour in the Kenema Neighborhood. We have received and included in your packet is a letter from the Kenema Neighborhood Association requesting the family-friendly streets as well as some additional traffic calming components with some stop signs. So at this point, once we got that request from them, we, you know, thought it appropriate to bring back it as a pilot project. We'll try it out. So the Y Kenema is, they've requested it, which was one of the items we heard at the original work session. It meets the requirements for volume, speed, residential district and a family-friendly route. And the area is part of the McLaughlin-Kenema Trail Plan that was adopted, I believe, last So the pilot project in Kenema would allow us to test the program out. We'd be able to get feedback from residents if the 20 mile per hour speed is implemented. It would allow us to build on and complement the existing McLaughlin-Kenema Trail work. So as part of the ODOT 99E Tunnel Illumination Project, the closure of tunnel water will become permanent to vehicles. And so that helps to create that pedestrian trail in that area. Additionally, when we paved High Street last summer, we've placed sharrows on High Street as that's also one of the components of the McLaughlin to Kenema Trail. And then additionally, this pilot program would allow us to understand the cost of implementing the program. And so we would have that information moving forward if we were to implement a citywide So on this slide, the, shows the family-friendly route plaque that would go under a 20 mile per hour speed limit. This is very similar to City of Portland's Neighborhood Greenway Program where they implement their 20 mile per hour. And then in the Kenema area, we would recommend the, what we're kind of calling a shared bike ped, shareo instead of just a bicycle. Because there are no sidewalks in Kenema, the pedestrians would be walking on the paved surface. And then because the streets in Kenema are a little smaller than some of our other paved streets, we would, we would right-size the pavement marking to be appropriate. And so we would, we still haven't worked through all those details yet as we kind of move forward, or if we move forward with the program, we would work out those. So additionally, the neighborhood has asked for some stop signs and so we would look at implementing those with the family-friendly route and the 20 mile per hour program. And then also with the McLaughlin-Kenema Trail, they recommended some additional pavement markings to, just kind of give a little clearer idea of kind of channeling the vehicles and creating some traffic calming measures. And so we will continue to work on those if we move forward with the pilot program and we would work with the neighborhood. So if the pilot program in Kenema is supported by the city commission, we've kind of got our next steps laid out. We would confirm implementation with the Neighborhood Association at their planned meeting in April. If the Neighborhood Association is still on board, we would do outreach to the Kenema residents, kind of sharing that bike ped pavement marking, the other pavement markings that we would propose, kind of work through that and complete that outreach to the neighborhood. We would come back to the city commission in the summer to do a formal adoption of an ordinance to implement the 20 mile per hour program and speed limit. And then at that point, we would schedule the installation of the signing and pavement markings. So for a kind of a, how do we evaluate the program's success? We would do follow-up with the neighborhood about six months after we implement the program to get their feedback, if they feel like the markings are working, if they're seeing a decrease in speeds. And then kind of collect that information and then bring back a report to the city commission on how the pilot program went and if we would recommend moving it forward or not for your consideration. And that is all I have. Do you have any questions?
I'll defer to my fellow commissioners for first questions and comments.
No questions. I'm really excited about this. I mean, so many people have talked about similar things and what the city could do to change speed limits and all that and it seems like this gives us real option to deal with a neighborhood that I think is going to get noticed a lot more because of the Kenema bluffs and because of the trail connections and because of the future landfalls. This is a good time, I think, to really start this and I'm excited to see the timeline, you know, being that quick. That's really exciting.
Commissioner Lyle Smith?
Yeah, I think I only have one or two questions. I'm, I agree, I'm excited about the program. I'm sure there are other neighborhoods who would be interested in it as well. My question is about your outreach. How do you plan to do the outreach piece to the residents? Is it a mailer that's kind of explaining all the pieces or?
We could do a mailer and we can do some outreach. Kelly Reed, our planner, knows the neighborhood, I believe, pretty well and she would assist with that piece.
Is it a door-to-door knocking?
Yes, no, yes. So there has been a lot of outreach to date to get to this proposal and to have this as part of the McLaughlin to Kenema Trail. That project alone had more than 15 meetings aside from Planning Commission, City Commission. But Kelly is in contact with the Neighborhood Association. She's supposed to go to, I think, both, to the Kenema's next meeting and talk to them as well. So there's a lot of communication. We will make sure that we both meet with the Neighborhood Association who is here tonight and, yeah.
Kelly presenting would be on the Kenema mailer?
Yes.
That goes to all the Kenema residents?
Yes. So what Tony just said is that when Kelly presents to the Kenema Neighborhood Association, normally this neighborhood association's post what is going to be on those meetings on their mailers and those mailers get mailed out to everyone in the Neighborhood Association. So there would be a, a notice to them as well.
Well, my own comments and then you recall my comments initially, I have no objection this whatsoever. Kenema's requesting it. Anybody that's driven Kenema would have no problem with this request. I mean, they're narrow roads, they're winding roads, they're switchback roads, there's a lack of sidewalks. It's certainly a worthwhile endeavor. I objected to the initial program, as you recall, because I felt it was a push program and I'm still, I will still question to implement it as a citywide ordinance because I like to see it being a pull program where the neighborhood says, hey, my neighborhood needs 20, not a summarily, we're going to make everything 20. And you know, the engineer in me sat here and says, well, 20, 20 miles an hour vehicle travels 29 feet per second, at 25 is 36. What, what's the impact of that, you know? Who cares? You know, what we care about is, I hope you have a baseline as to what's the traffic experience been in Kenema and how does this improve it? And honestly, it's not the simple addition of a 20 mile an hour speed limit. It is, as you said, the traffic calming in its entirety, which includes signage, which includes markings and which includes the speed limit. So I'm a fan of home rule, even in the smallest form, and this is home rule by Kenema. I've got no issues with this whatsoever and we should, will apply it to other neighborhoods as appropriate, but I don't want us to see a summarily 20 is plenty approach to the entire, you know, let neighborhoods dictate what's right for them. And I haven't, I haven't seen the ordinance and I don't know what form the ordinance would take, but we'll discuss that when that comes before us.
Yeah, my recollection is it's a street by street resolution that the commission has to approve. So when we bring this, if we bring this back for other areas, we'll bring it back by the street, probably not, it wouldn't be neighborhood-wide, it would be, you know, a corridor in particular. In Kenema, because of the neighborhood, the McLaughlin to Kenema Trail, we had, we kind of had that discussion about expanding the family-friendly designation to include a few more of the streets, Fifth Avenue, Fourth Avenue, Third Avenue, some of the side streets. And we made those family-friendly streets so that we could stay consistent with our family-friendly designation through the TSP. We may do something similar to other streets if we kind of determine them to be the right place. A good example of that, I think, and really a good example is why I think this is important, is Commissioner O'Donnell, you're pretty familiar with the problems that we're having up in Rivercrest. You know, Barker Avenue, for instance, which gets a lot of traffic, isn't considered in our TSP a family-friendly street. Should it be, maybe? Maybe we'll look at that, you know? So those are the kind of things that I think this pilot program will help us to figure out. We'll definitely know a lot more about cost, one of the other kind of reasons why we were suggesting just a handful of streets was because we were worried that this program would be effective and be liked and all of a sudden we'd be consumed with too many requests that we couldn't afford to do or didn't have time to implement. And then we'd have that kind of neighborhood frustration with us when we're really just trying to implement a plan on a, on a scale we can handle. So more to come.
I'm either cursed or blessed with a good memory. I'm either cursed or blessed with a good memory. And I remember the statements being, doesn't matter if you post 20 or 25. The guy that's going to go through there doing 35 is going to do it at 20 or 25. And so I think one of the variables that needs to be factored into the success is it, is how much traffic enforcement has been done there prior and how much is doing in the future. So if we've done, to be absolute, we've done zero, and all of a sudden we put this program into effect, and now we spend 20 hours a week in there doing traffic enforcement, that's not the impact of signage, that's the impact of traffic enforcement. So make sure that the variables are fairly measured. And one that's significant would be that very variable of traffic enforcement in presence. If the signage and the markings and the speed limit are effective, good for us.
Yeah, that was kind of one of my questions, too. I mean, how would you really measure the success? I mean, is it going to be truly anecdotal stories from the neighborhood of, oh, yeah, I think, I think in general, people have slowed down. And is, is that a good enough measure? Or have there been traffic enforcement periods? And be careful about, if we're really trying to test signage, should we have traffic enforcement periods there on purpose? Or we need to be really careful about it? Or maybe some coordination with, with the police department to make sure that, you know? I don't know. It's just, I'm just not sure how you're going to measure the success, you know, other than maybe anecdotally or?
Absolutely right.
We could do counters. I don't know what Dana has in mind. But, you know, what we've heard from police is Kanema is, because of the narrow streets, it's kind of a hard place to enforce, you know, traffic speeds. And, but, but the other piece that's, is there's a huge difference in Kanema between 20 miles per hour and 25 miles per hour. You know, getting folks in those neighborhoods that are even, I mean, I drive it and, you know, I had, you know, 15 miles an hour on a lot of those streets. So, you know, I mean, there will be that, that kind of perception piece. But I think it's going to be relatively accurate because the vehicles have to drive slow in that neighborhood anyway. But we can look at some other technologies as well.
So do you intend to gather data with the, you know, the speed counters across the, you know, the hoses or whatever? Does that, does that measure speed or just volume?
It measured, it can measure speed as well as volume.
It should be able to, time and distance. I, I'm certainly for, again, it's, if it were what's called a design of experiment, we're trying to isolate the variable. In this case, what's the effect of this proposal we're putting forward? And if we add another variable and change it, which is increased traffic, that's not, that's not a fair analysis. So that's, I would caution you to be, to do a good job on it. All right. Any further discussion on that item?
We have a gentleman here from the Kanema Neighborhood Association, if you would like to hear from him.
We generally don't, but I mean, it's probably limited. Is there one individual that wants to make a comment? Please step forward. I'm, I'm, I'm a fan of the community. Come forward and give us your thoughts. And if, hopefully you can limit it to the three minutes that we allow, and we'll be done with that.
Thank you. My name is Ron Beislein. I am appointed steering committee for liaison for land use in Kanema. And my responsibility mostly is to give the information to the Kanema neighborhood during the meetings about what's happening in the neighborhood. One of these things are, is this, after Kayla Reed came to us and talked about the trail, one thing, we've talked about speeds, we talked about signage. I think the biggest thing the neighborhood is concerned about is safety. As you know, the park up there now is getting more and more use every year. Metro is advertising it. The people know about it now. The kids come out. And the neighborhood is also changing, too. In the old time, a lot of people have passed away, and now families are coming in. So you see all more kids in the streets. And as you know, the neighborhood's very narrow roads. And when people drive down there, they're not looking for little kids. And there's a lot of blind corners. And when they come around a corner and the kid there, it's going to be a safety issue. So not only is it just a speed limit, it's also the signage and slowing people down to stop, to be cautious. Both the signs we've asked for is an area that kids walk across, especially with the trail and the neighborhood. So we, we're forcing the issues for safety, not only just speed, but safety for the neighborhood. And that's something, the number one thing we should be caring about is the safety of the neighborhood.
We thank you for that, and we guarantee that the outcome that we desire is safety. And the input variables are speed control and driving and the conditions of the road. So we totally agree with you, and that's why we proceed with the project.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, the final item on this, this evening's agenda is the Charter Park Update 19-114 by Mr. Phil Lewis.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. So as you're aware, at the direction of the City Commission, staff begin the process of identifying all of our park properties and to designate park properties as parks by ordinance in order to, again, unrecognize them, but to protect them for current users as well as future generations of families in our community to be used as parks. So really quickly, we're going to go through the Chapter 10 of the Charter, which designates that protection. It prevents the commission or the city from transferring, selling, vacating, or major changes of a city park without first going to a vote of the people. Again, the intent is to be used for beautification, natural enjoyment, and preserve for future generations. Section 41 shows the approval of the voters. Again, kind of goes through the, the details of what can and can't happen for the legal status of any park within our system. It also recognizes the natural parks, of which we currently only have one designated natural park in our system, which is Waterboard Park. Section 42 designates the, the parks that are recognized as parks under our charter. We have 11 properties which are currently designated and protected as charter parks, those that are listed there. And then Section 43 highlights how we would bring on additional parks as recognized by the City Commission and would then hold the same protections as the other charter parks. So the commission can accept gifts of property for park purposes or platted as park purposes. Additionally, a real property as acquired can then be recognized by ordinance as a park, which is the process that we're going through now. Some of the properties that we do have are designated on plats as park purposes or as open space. And we've gone through the process of making sure that all of our parks are designated as parks by ordinance in order to make sure we're clear in which parks are designated and that we're clearly outlining the property boundaries and that the commission gives us a, a good, solid direction on what that, what that park is, what the boundaries are, and that it's something that we can, oh, that was something on the screen, something that we can move forward through and have clarity for future commissions to consider. So we, again, have the 11 properties that are designated as parks by charter. In 2003, we had two other properties that were designated as parks by ordinance, Abernathy Creek and John Storm. We began the process of identifying kind of the low-hanging fruit, as it were, in our park system and bringing those forward for consideration by the commission. We designated additional, what do we have up there? 12, 12 properties in September of 2018. In November of 2018, December of 2018, additional five were recognized. So to date, we've had 28 parks that have been recognized as, as parks by ordinance. We are proposing bringing forward additional four parks next week that you'll see on the agenda. Mountain View Cemetery, Oak Tree Park, Singer Creek Park, Barkley Hills Park. We have a couple of other properties that we're still moving through some pieces on the back end, including Ermitingher House and McLaughlin Promenade. And then we also have an additional couple of properties that we'll kind of go over in, in just a minute on the upcoming slide. So Mountain View Cemetery, one of the things that came up as we were discussing the, the property, and any intricacies specific to this property was that it was designated as a park by ordinance in 1986, but not the entire property. So the section you see there in yellow was the, was the park boundary line for the cemetery and was designated as a park by ordinance. The designation stated that designated as a city park to be used solely for the maintenance of burial plots, mausoleum, and general cemetery purposes and the administration thereof. The additional one acre property in the middle on the, on the slide, the picture that you see is the additional one acre property that will be included on the ordinance that you'll see next week. One of the conversations that we had with the city's attorney's office was that, as you know, we went over in the previous slide, is that no property may be sold or transferred. So there is, there are some intricacies of, of things to, to consider. So obviously, we sell burial plots. We, we sell mausoleum space. There is obviously a, an onus on the city to continue to maintain those spaces as the, the use would indicate in the, the sale of the plot. And so City Attorney Kabizman and I spoke a couple of times before the presentation this evening. And obviously, in 1986, well over 30 years ago, since then, we have not had any, to my knowledge, any blowback from the community at large or questions as to why we're selling plots, given that it is a charter status property. If we really wanted to make sure we had all of our Ts crossed and Is dotted, we would probably need to go to a vote of the people in order to have permission to sell plots in the cemetery as it is a city park. The other, the other approach could be that, obviously, it's not been an issue, that we could continue to operate and cross that bridge when we get there. And maybe Kerry could?
I talked to Mr. Kabizman on my way down here about this. And what we've sort of come to is the idea that this park was acquired with this limitation built into it, similar to Wesley Lynn Park that was acquired with an easement subject that was available to private property owners. And so fulfilling that mission, I think, is sort of baked into the acquisition. And that is certainly sort of part of the argument that we would make if there was a challenge, is that the park was designated for the purposes of providing burial plots and mausoleum plots. So I, I think that ought to be part of the City Commission's consideration of this.
We have owned and maintained the property since the mid 1800s.
Sorry to interrupt you. The, the only thing that's coming before the commission is the, what, is it one acre?
Is the one acre.
The one acre sort of bluish square. So the only thing that we're talking about is this bluish square, which I understand is going to accommodate maintenance structure?
Primarily maintenance structures, staff, buildings, storage. It may eventually incorporate some burial plots, but that's not in the, the current plans.
I'd like to think common sense would prevail, but, you know?
Yeah, right.
Maybe we need to make it clean. I don't know. Your thoughts?
Well, one of the thoughts I've had for years is why did it take so long for us to get here? And that's because probably no one really wanted to get into all this stuff. Because there are so many issues. Because, yeah, we will build, be building buildings in a park there. And we have clearly built buildings in parks before that haven't gone to the vote. I know the library did, but the End of the Orient Trail Interpreter Center didn't. And, you know, then you have, so there's, there's a lot of areas here. And, yeah, I think we need to address them as much as we can. It's funny, because as soon as I saw that map, I was like, oh, no, we're selling, yeah. I mean, it's just as soon as you realize, oh, we didn't think about that.
And the charter does give the, the city the option of constructing buildings for recreational or park maintenance purposes.
Without going to?
Without going to a vote of?
Right, okay. I have a few questions. It's complicated because there's so many listings. Like, you know, for, for a general citizen who goes to a place that the city owns and there's a sign that says it's a park, one would assume it's a park. And if you go onto the city's website and you look at the list of parks, you would assume that the list of things on the city's website under Parks are parks. Some are, some aren't. And I looked at that today because I was trying to figure out, okay, 17 have been approved, 17 have been designated by ordinance, 11, I think, by charter. So that's a total of 28 that have been designated. We have a total of 36 recognized parks, which I'm not exactly sure what the word recognize means. But if my math is correct, we have four more coming to us. That leaves four left over. One of the things that, you know, but, so I generally have a pretty good understanding of what all the parks are in this city, or at least I thought. And then I was looking on that list and things like, you know, the Cove and the trail on the Cove is listed under Parks. Well, that's not really a park. But it is. You know, the Ermitingher House property, the Pioneer Center property. So, yeah, how can we, you know, get these all in a way that's pretty easy for people to understand what is a park and what is not, which is this whole process? But, you know, things like the cemetery piece, I think we have to do as much as we can to account for all these questions. Because if we don't, we're leaving it for five years later, 10 years later, where someone says, hey, wait a minute, you can't sell a burial plot, because it doesn't come up. Or 100 years later, where, oh, well, we didn't know that. We didn't know we owned that property. You know, I mean, time goes by and, and we don't know that. And that's why I'm, you know, thinking, we have to fix it all as much as we can. Because when we sit here and think that McLaughlin Promenade, which was designated, well, I won't use the word designated. McLaughlin Promenade was put into a plat map by John McLaughlin himself. And it's still not a park. I mean, that's just crazy to me. And so that's going to the PrAC. What's going to be the conversation at PrAC about the Promenade?
So for each of the properties, we've worked through the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee to make a recommendation to the City Commission. Some of the considerations for PrAC and McLaughlin Promenade specifically are, you know, we're currently in the process of doing a survey, boundary survey for the Promenade. It is, as you noted, a very, very old property and has some intricacies to the property. And we want to make sure that we are correctly identifying what is a park, any and all easements that may be currently existing on the, the park property, making sure that we have the boundaries identified appropriately.
Now, I don't know if this is something that I know through historic research or if this is just something I remember hearing over the years. But I remember this general feeling that the age of the Promenade and the age of some of the homes built along the Promenade, that some of the homes are in the park or parts of some of the homes are in the park. So that's part of it, too, right?
Yeah, we, we definitely have some encroachment issues on that park specifically. And that will be part of the process, is a public encroachment process.
Wow.
Anything further?
It seems like a lot.
It is a lot. And, you know, I, I, I know talking about the cemetery, it almost seems ridiculous. But, you know, at some future point, we, I'm, I'm sure we put it on the ballot and the citizens say, oh, my God, we've been burying people there for how many decades? What are we doing? But you know what? That's the legality of it. So maybe we do, we'll, we'll have that discussion later. Do you have anything you'd like to comment on?
And we do have a few more slides just.
Oh, you do?
Sorry.
We're saving the special ones for tonight.
You went to the John Lewis School of?
We're climbing the tree right now.
John's been mentoring me on my, my slide deck, so.
Proceed.
No, I only give him great advice. No, I only give him great advice.
So we're going to go through a couple more properties, just things to consider and things that we've been discussing, both with PrAC as well as staff. So the Ermtinger House is another property that has some, some interesting things to consider. So what you're looking at here is the current configuration of the, the property lines for the Ermtinger House, which does include the fire department building there, which is city-owned, as well as the lot just northwest of the, the fire department building, which is city-owned property as well. In conversations with, with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, as well as with city staff, we're looking at a proposal to split the two lots and the two properties to identify the Ermtinger House property as a property standalone, and then to shift the parking for the fire department building, again, both city-owned, to be a separate lot, works better with the use of the two buildings. One of the considerations is that we would need to probably identify access easement through the Ermtinger House property prior to designating it as a park in order to, again, have that kind of grandfathered in for the use of the parking lot adjacent to the fire department building that would enter off of John Adams and into the, the parking lot. That also would give us additional, additional ways to collaborate with the Clarkmets County-owned property next door, which is a historic house museum, and use the properties as, as one site, possibly opening up at a future date, open lawn areas to have larger community events or plaza space between the two sites, whereas right now, it's a, the drive-through for the fire department facility.
Yeah, well, this is one that came up, again, I think I was here for that meeting in the public, and I asked a question about, I think this configuration makes a lot of sense. Another conversation, though, that happened that night, which I don't remember the outcome of, was the conversation, the Pioneer Center lot.
Yes.
Next to, no.
I remember.
The church, behind the church, that conversation, whatever happened to that, that, that was still connected to Pioneer Center?
Parking lot for the Pioneer Center, so there's a parking lot within the block of the Pioneer Center, and then there's a kind of overflow parking lot, which is across the street. The PrAC made a recommendation and the commission moved forward, park ordinance to identify just the block in which the Pioneer Center sits as a park by ordinance. So the overflow parking lot across the street, which is adjacent to the church, is currently parks maintained, city-owned, obviously used for the Pioneer Center, but has not been considered as a park, a charter park overlay.
I, I just remember sitting in the audience thinking, when this conversation was happening, this debate about, well, should it be a park or should it not be a park? That's really not the question. The question is, what was it purchased for? Why is it there? I mean, so this debating about, I mean, we can go back and find, well, what, how did the city get that property? Why did they get the property? If the city got that property for a future city hall, which I think was part of the plan originally down there, that was all supposed to be the original center of city government with city hall and the library and all of that, right on those couple blocks, which is why I think we did it. But, so I don't know that history in detail, but having a conversation, well, we think it should be this or whatever based on now, is really going back, seeing what did we get it for, and seeing the process of it will answer that question. So I wanted to kind of get an idea where that, that went. This makes sense a lot, and I like that idea, because at some point, the fire department may not be there in the future, which means we have another amazing historic building on a block with, you know, this incredible, these incredible buildings that have a huge potential, so.
So I have a question. So is this just initially a land use, lot partition action that would have to happen prior to it just being designated as a park? It's currently not designated as a park at all, right? So this would not need, this change, this new configuration would not need to go to a public vote, because you're not, you're not changing currently designated park property?
Correct, it's currently not designated as a park. The thought process was to make sure we took care of all this before the park designation.
Right.
So that it would be included in the, kind of grandfathered into the use of the, the property, and we would work with planning to do lot line adjustments and go through the planning process.
I also remember that meeting, and then there was some discussion about that parking lot that you referred to, Commissioner Smith, and how you used, and the invitation to confer with the people that ran Pioneer Center and get their input on how it was used, so.
You know, one thing that, I mean, I don't know if we talked about or shared, but, you know, we have it detailed now, because of some of the direction we've received from the city commission a couple of years ago. Phil and myself and other staff have worked pretty hard at getting every publicly-owned parcel and as much of the acquisition and plat and, you know, recorded documents available. So we have a, not only do we have it mapped and each individual property numbered, but we have, we've got file folders for each of those that have details about each individual property. So I don't know the answer to your specific question, I haven't looked at that piece property, but I'm guessing there's something in that file folder that can answer some of those questions.
Yeah, and, and it's not to say that it can, you know, can't be changed. I mean, that's, as evolution goes throughout the city, you're going to make those changes, but I guess the one thing is these hybrids, right, with like, it's a park, I mean, we have clear parks that are named parks, they've got a sign, they've been designated, everyone knows their park, and then you have these parks that are not really parks, like the Pioneer Center, which, I mean, it is a park, but driving by, people wouldn't know it's necessarily a park, or the Ermtinger House, they wouldn't necessarily know that that's a park itself, or those, something that, and, and some of those I don't even think are listed on the parks list. The parks list on the website is a little confusing, so is there some way to have some sort of designation that people could look and say, okay, well, this is a park use? Because things like the trail, I mean, there's trail systems and there's little pieces that are here that are clearly city-owned under parks, but are not really, it's hard to communicate that to the public, but if they're just looking on the website and they're saying, well, this doesn't make sense, because I have this list and this list, and it doesn't quite match up.
One thing to consider, just to think about as well, especially with, specifically on this one, is, you know, is there still a, a desire to have a conversation to work with the National Park Service on Ermtinger, right? And if we designated it a charter park that sailed or the transfer property to the National Park Service, we need to go to a vote of the people. So, I mean, I guess it's just, we haven't really talked about it in a long, long time, you know? It kind of floats out there, like, you know, with McLaughlin going to the National Park Service, we'd always love Ermtinger, is, you know, this commission certainly, I haven't had that conversation with anyone.
And the reason is that national park status goes to a whole nother level, and that's something that is, you know, not under our complete control, so it really needs, it really needs an advocate and people to work for process towards getting to that level. And as we know, because the city pulled the house out of the original deal with putting it in there, the National Parks was really reluctant to think about it again, because we screwed up, screwed up our opportunity there within, way back when, where most of us weren't around. But I, I guess it's an interesting conversation to have about the future of this house, because, yeah, whether it's ten years from now or twenty years from now, is that, you know, maybe we've changed our viewpoint with the amount of expense we've put into the house and staffing, whether or not that's where we want to get to in ten years or not, I don't know. And maybe that's a conversation that can go forward a little bit with the friends of the Ermtinger House and PrAC and other groups that might have, you know, opinions on what the future of that place is. So, yeah, that may be one that we, well, McLaughlin House is a designated, is a park, a city park still, right? I mean, that's our, still our, even though it's a national park, so there's overlay there, but.
Yeah, we have a hundred-year lease with the National Park Service for that property. So another couple of parks that have been discussed, Dement Park, recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee is to hold on to that park, but not to dedicate it as a park, to be able to eventually, at some point, use it as surplus, sell the property and use it for park acquisition in areas that are park deficient. It's adjacent to a couple of other more substantial park properties and does not have many park amenities on, on that property currently. It's been a piece that has been talked about for many years by previous commissions, as well as staff, as a piece of property that might be available for surplus at some point. So that has not come forward to the commission for consideration, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee recommendation is to hold it for now, until at a future date we can identify a proper use for the sale of that property to acquire another property. The Sportcraft Boat Ramp Park currently is not designated as a park by ordinance. One of the intricacies to this property is that we currently have an agreement with a private property or a private business to manage part of the property, and the city commit, or, I'm sorry, the city attorney's office has concerns that we would need to go to a vote of the people if we were ever able to not come to terms with the current leasing and need to go out to acquire another business to operate the marina located on the property. And so it would probably make the most sense to, at this time, not designate it as a park, so that if and when we do go to that, come to that process in a future date, that we would not have to go to a vote of the people in order to have, have a new license agreement with a new company. We do have a couple of other additional properties or open spaces that I wanted to bring to your attention. These are properties that have been identified through the process as, you know, we don't typically consider as parks, but they are park, are city-owned and park-operated or identified through varying ways, either by plat or by purchase, so that we use them as park properties but are not designated as parks. The Clarkmets River Trailhead, to Commissioner Smith's point earlier about the Cove Trail property, this is a piece of property that is owned by the city, used as a trailhead. The property is just to the left of that property is where the, the Clarkmets Trail connects to the Cove Phase Two, Three, and further on to Clarkmets Park. We will probably be coming forward to recommend this to be adopted as a park by ordinance, even though we wouldn't necessarily consider it a, you wouldn't, your typical park, it would be a special use area, but designated park through our charter. The Holcomb Ridge Open Space, so this is a 5.9 acre open space in the Park Place neighborhood. It's dedicated, it's open space by plat. It also has a utility easement and a public access easement overlay. There is a small section of trail that connects the end of that development to Holcomb Boulevard. You can kind of see it kind of looping through and on the, kind of the middle of that Holcomb Boulevard connectivity. This is probably another park to consider, you know, maybe we do designate it as a park, just so there's some clarity, but it obviously has some protections as, has public access easement, and it has dedicated, it's an open space by plat, and so the city has accepted it as a, as an open space, but we've not taken that extra step to identify it as a park to have those protections that we have in the charter. So this is an additional property that we could move forward with, designated as a park, although we might not really publicly consider it a park, but maybe an open space, even though it's designated as a, as a park through the ordinance. So, and that's more of a marketing term as opposed to a real world, you know, what, what we consider the park.
Can you go back to the one at the Cove? Where, where the, where the trail goes out around the sewer treatment facility and goes around and connects to a parking area and all that, is that city-owned?
We have, we have an easement, an access easement, trail easement across the, the West property, which then connects to where the large open area is currently, that's the, the North Park is what the development has been calling it. That's all owned by, well, the, I was going to say the city, but it's the Urban Area Agency owns that area.
Okay, but then when you go, when you go, you keep following that trail and you go all the way towards, you know, 205 and 213, that part, that area there, that's a parking area and the trail comes in that way, is that?
Right at the bridge?
Whose property is that?
Right at the bridge you're talking about, over the river? Or?
Yeah, so if you're going down 213 instead of getting on the highway, you go where the, around the corner there past where the manufactured homes are, and you go in, there's a parking.
That's what this is.
That is what that is, that's what I was wondering, okay. That is, okay.
Tri-City is right to the left.
Okay, I just couldn't tell with that close enough of a map, that's right.
If you remember that, that trail leaves this property, bounces out into Washington, there's really not a trail there that stays on the old Eighty Second Drive.
Right.
Which is part of the road right away.
Okay.
And so.
I couldn't really tell from this map, that's what I was wondering.
Newell Creek Canyon, what we're calling Property 170, this is another property that we've had conversations with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. The property, at, at one point, Metro was under the understanding that it was their property and had done the master plan work for the Newell Creek Canyon public access, and so they have trails and off, off-street bike, mountain biking trails through the, the entire area. Property 170, though, is owned by the city and is for park use. So we're looking at the, this is kind of an overview of the, of the Newell Creek Canyon property development as proposed by Metro through their master planning process. They did a very thorough public engagement process, and you'll notice the, my very rudimentary drawing in the upper section of that, which shows the, the general area where the, that property, 170, would be located. The cemetery property just to the left of, of that, so it's roughly fourteen acres. Again, it's right in the middle of, of Metro Properties just to the north and all around to the, to the south and east of the property. Trailhead there, located to the, just to the west of, of that. So Metro has contacted the city and let us know that they're interested in acquiring that property, they'd like to do a, a transfer of property. The other option would be to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with them or look at doing a access easement over that property, still retaining, city retaining ownership, but operation and maintenance done through Metro. We've had some conversations, one base point conversation with PrAC, and I will be bringing back additional information to them at the, the meeting upcoming this month. So more information to come on that. If you have any questions, if you have them.
It's too steep for burials. Just kidding. That's interesting. It's a huge piece.
I have, I have one question about the Holcomb Open Space. Who owns that property?
The city does. And it serves as a stormwater facility, there's kind of a steep, it's raised in steep sections in there.
It was the undevelopable sections of the subdivision adjacent to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I found it interesting, though, you said name it a park but not really treat it as a park.
I guess more of a marketing, so it would be probably recognize it as, probably do a better job of recognizing it as a trail connectivity, whereas some of our properties, so similar to the Clarkmets River Trailhead, where we don't, we don't list it as, as a park per se, but probably in our inventory as a public access piece, so create it more as a. So create it more as a open space, um, in the marketing as opposed to a, a developed park.
Yeah, I, I think some of this comes down to what Rocky, Commissioner Smith was saying earlier about making it very clear to the public which pieces are actually parks and which ones are city-owned open space, which, you know, for the folks that dig into policy and, and legal issues in the city, it's really important that we distinguish those. Um, and so, yeah, and the other comment I would make, I, uh, I, I think we should be really thoughtful about the areas that we designate as a park with those protections. Particularly the ones that are these hybrids, like the Ermentinger House and the parking lots, like I'm, like, I'm like, okay, should we just do the, why are, why are we including the parking lot versus just the area around the Ermentinger House? Like, we need to just be really thoughtful before we put that designation on a piece of that property and what, what that means for the future. And so I, I just want us to be really thoughtful about some of these. And so maybe the ones that you're bringing forward to us on the 20th, I believe, aren't, they're pretty clear-cut and you're not bringing any of these questionable ones to us, right?
Uh, the cemetery property is one of the, one of the, um, ones that will be brought forward on the 20th.
That one I think is an easier one. I think the follow-on to that is, is what do we do legally? Um, and I, I would agree with Commissioner Smith on that. I think we should take care of our business and, um, if it means we need to take something to the vote of the people. I can't imagine that the public would say, stop burying people there, um, and making it, you know, I, I just, just let's do it legal and clean it up, um, so. That one, that, that one I'm not too concerned about, but some of these other ones, I, I think they need some thoughtful discussion, um, before we move forward on.
So I've been sitting back digesting this all night and the opportunities for confusion abound. I mean, there's, there's parks and there's park-like and there's operated as a park but not really a park. And then there's dedicated parks and designated parks and charter parks. And, you know, each of those, I, I presume that, that they have different meanings and different levels of protection and different restrictions on use and disposition. I almost want a, a chart that says, this, here's what you can do with this and here's, because it's absolutely confusing to me. And I can't imagine someone that hasn't dealt with it, sitting at home going, oh, it makes perfect sense. It's park-like, but it's not a park. It's a park, but it's not a charter park.
Yeah.
I mean, I admire the PrAC group, but it's a handful.
Well, and, and from a website perspective, you have to think, is, is our portrayal of lands on the website meant to be for general public use? If you want to come and recreate and trail and hike and picnic or whatever, like, is that the intended purpose? And do we need to have legal disclaimers on there? Maybe we do and maybe they're not bold enough, but that, that say, you know, this is not for legal interpretation. And if you want, you know, and, and so I think we've, we've hit some park challenges.
Totally agree.
Yeah. And, and so wading through that, um, you know, obviously the GIS folks, um, are probably gonna be taking some direction or have taken some direction either from the city manager or the commission in the past, but it's definitely a good discussion to have about what we're presenting and how we're presenting it and what's, what's clear or not clear.
Yeah, cause anytime we, anytime we label something with the word park, that translates into, we, we basically call this a park. Uh, and which has gotten us into some of the situations we're dealing with now and all this whole topic. Um, um, so I was going somewhere else with that. Um, I guess once we determine what is what, then that is something we really need to be, um, proactive about. And I know the financial situation is not great, um, but signage, I mean, what, what is the signage for a, a designated park versus the trailhead and does the sign in that property just say Oregon City Open Space? Or does it say Oregon City Trailhead? Or does it say Oregon City Park? I mean, when we get to actually what these things are, then we need to start labeling them that way and, and using that, that language in a way, when I'm talking about a trailhead, I don't say park, but I say that's a, uh, an open space or a trailhead. I mean, we really need to get into that dialogue that connects back to the way that we're, um, you know, labeling them and PrAC and all these other different groups need to kind of understand that so we aren't confusing people. And we'll, I think we'll get there, but it might be 10 years from now.
I think they'll start to filter out.
Yeah.
You'll start to see it, right?
We've got a lot done.
But it has implications in terms of enforcement and how it's used and the power of our local law enforcement to enforce regulations, overnight use, how, I mean, those things are all important. And I, I mean, the simplest distinction, what's the difference between a park and a charter park? And what level of protection does one enjoy versus the other and disposition versus the other? You know, and, and I don't want to get into that tonight because we'll be here all night, but I mean, good lord, what's the terminology and what's the implications of that?
And it came up with the cemetery with the marijuana dispensary, is it a park? Is it not a park? Um, I mean, if we have a marijuana dispensary that wants to build near a trailhead, what, I mean, that's a park. In my mind, it's a park. Um, I mean, so these are gonna keep coming.
Yep.
Um, and they're never gonna end, uh, until we really narrow all those down. So I commend the work because it's, it's, um.
As do I.
It's a lot.
And we have a couple more slides.
No, you're gonna displace the current reigning.
You're it, buddy.
So.
Wait, there's more.
Getting through this, uh, so we have, uh, what we call the Madrona Open Space. This is a 1.2 acre open space in the South End neighborhood, uh, has been dedicated as a park by plat. Uh, so the plat does recognize it as a park. Um, it, again, speaking to the intricacies of how we identify properties versus how they're used, uh, it does have a, um, uh, an access, it's kind of a flag lot from, uh, Madrona Drive. On the, uh, just north of those, or I guess it's, I think this is due north. So, uh, on adjacent properties on the other side of it are the Kanema Properties owned and maintained by Metro. Um, and so it is, um, on those two lots, just to the, uh, to the top, left and right, are Metro-owned properties. Um, and then there's an access from Madrona Drive. Uh, it's not signed, um, even, I'm sure the property owners might not even know that, uh, there's a, um, owned property between the two lots. Uh, so speaking of the encroachment issues that we deal with on a lot of our properties, um, in looking at this property, we probably should be enforcing the, at least the access between the two, uh, properties. Um, if you were to look at it from Madrona Drive, you probably would not know that it's, uh, accessible or usable. It's pretty steep. I doubt that folks would probably want to venture back, uh, straight back there into the, um, into the property, but, uh, it is publicly owned and designated as a park, uh, by plat. And so whether or not we, um.
Designated or dedicated, what's the difference?
My apologies, yeah, dedicated as a park by plat.
Two different things, yeah.
Um, and then whether or not we want to look at, um, designating it as a park by ordinance, whether we want to look at having conversations with Metro around, you know, maybe it makes more sense for Metro to own and operate that, that park. Um, whether or not we want to formalize it, make sure that we have, uh, an actual formal trail that goes through from Madrona Drive into the property. Um, you know, lots, lots of things to consider. I'm not asking for direction at this meeting tonight. We just wanted to give you an update and kind of the process that we've been going through in identifying what properties are, are which, uh, what the, you know, how they've been identified as, uh, park use, whether through plat or through acceptance of a donation, those types of things so that we can, uh, give you that information and give the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee that information so that we can have a, a way forward that is clear and that the, the public knows, you know, how, how we are to use these properties. Uh, another property, Newell Ridge Canyon Open Space, um, this is adjacent to the Newell Creek Canyon. Uh, property is owned by Metro, uh, it's in the Barclay Hills neighborhood. It's dedicated as park purposes by plat. So the plat that was accepted by the city, uh, designates this property as a, um, as a park, um, for park purposes.
Hey, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
I'm gonna pause, pause you and direct my question to Ms. Troy. I, this set of parks makes me question how these things are being platted to the city as open space. And it, I'm just wondering, it's like, is, is this like the wool over the sheep's eyes for subdivisions when they're plant, when, you know, when they're plating these out and they're saying, oh, we're gonna give you open space and here it is, here's your strip of land, and then it's up to us to actually make it into a park or open space for this community of all of these people that live around this? And like, this is supposed to be their park and yet we haven't done anything with it? I mean, this, that, I'm looking at, I don't know how, how this is happening, but I'm seeing a couple of these in a row. So is that what's happening?
Good question. Um, we get tracks, they come across as tracks through many different ways. A lot of times there are areas that are steep or near a stream, so they can't be built on. And sometimes the city has taken ownership of them and others they haven't. We don't see this very much lately for them going to the city. There was a recent subdivision last year, the year before, the one that created a lot averaging thing. And that had a large open space component and there were a lot of the discussions during that, um, time before the planning commission about who's gonna maintain this park. And in that case, it was the homeowners association that was maintaining the open space. And some of these questions of should the city maintain it or not are brought up. And in that, for that particular subdivision, uh, the general consensus was, you know, they maintain their own open space. So, long answer, but normally these tracks have many, many purposes. There are stormwater tracks, there are steep tracks that are unbuildable. And if you look through our history of land divisions, some are owned by the city and some are not. Um, it's pretty rare these days that we would see them designated for park purposes. A lot of the park purposes you see are within planned unit development, which is a type of, um, kind of like a subdivision where you can, um, have small lots and big lots, but you average out to the same number of dwelling units. And we stopped doing those, uh, quite some time ago. And so we haven't seen a lot of these parks. That's typically where we would have seen them. So because we got rid of that process, we have a master plan which is equivalent, but nobody has done that for residential purposes. We haven't seen this issue as much, but we do see tracks mainly for stormwater purposes.
So are we locked into anything legally because it says on a plat that it's for park? You know, for a park, platted for a park?
Dedicated as park purposes.
However you're wording it, whatever the correct words are.
Um, I'm reluctant to comment because I'm not, because I'm not looking at the document itself. I'm not looking at the plat itself.
Right.
Um, but there can be some legal limitations.
Okay.
Commissioner Smith?
Um, would some of these come back to us, the, the zoom out version of the map is what I want to see? Because some of these, I'm like, I have no idea where this is. I think I know where this is.
Sorry, well, well taken.
You know, so, so, you know, being able to say, okay, that's how it connects to the Metro piece or this is how it connects to nothing, um, I think is gonna be a big part of that. So, yes, the small, or yes, the zoomed in version, but also a, a zoomed out version so we can get a feel.
And the corollary too to that will be how, what were the circumstances that we acquired it?
Right.
You know, I mean, what was the land use approval that it went with? That we, what was the intended purpose?
Right.
Um, that will go with helping flesh out the context.
Right.
And that would help inform.
Right, yeah.
And, and I will tell you on this park, this property specifically, the property all around it, um, besides the 13841, that section is, is privately owned. Everything else around it is Metro-owned property, part of the Newell Creek Canyon.
Moving on.
Moving on. Brighton Overlook. And, uh, Rocky will like the, the next slide a little bit better. So this is, um, Brighton Overlook is, uh, property in yellow. Uh, so it's part of the conveyance, um, 1910 conveyance of the Board of Water Commission. So, uh, Waterburg Park is of the same way that we acquired Waterburg Park. Uh, there is a private property owner at, uh, 1041 there, uh, just north of, uh, the, the Brighton Overlook property. Um, we do have some encroachment issues with this property with neighboring, uh, homeowners. Uh, and it's adjacent to, um, some undeveloped right-of-way, so it might be a usable property for park purposes possibly as part of a trail connectivity piece or, or something like that at, at a future date. Um, so this is another property that has a lot of things to consider before moving forward. Uh, Moccasin Red Hawk Open Space, uh, so this was dedicated as open space by plat. Um, it's in the Gaffley, uh, Gaffney Lane neighborhood, uh, 0.3 acres of, of open space. It's adjacent to the school, uh, there, uh, just to the right and then, um.
Under power lines?
Power line, port or there, uh, just on the other side of Red Hawk Drive. And then the, the last property that we have that was identified, we have a, a shoreline easement. We actually own, um, that property, 0.12 acres, uh, very narrow. It's, uh, primarily to be used for, again, uh, waterway access, um, working with the SL on anything in the, uh, in the waterway. And that was the last property. So again, um, those were some of the, the intricacies, some of the things that we've been talking about as staff. I know that we have not come back with a full overview of, um, the Charter Park, uh, update, uh, recently. And so as we've gone through this process of identifying 28 parks to date as having charter protections and, uh, another few still to come, we wanted to give you an update on where we sit and make sure we answered any questions that you may have.
I have nothing further, anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, your report, if any.
I don't have anything for tonight.
Any other comments by my co-commissioners? In that case, we'll adjourn the meeting.